Last good shot.
What do you have?
I'll have us out of here by quarter to five. Guaranteed.
Pressure's on.
That, no, that's the wrong move to make. If you want to beat my time, just start talking.
Now, I don't know about Cease and Walt. I'm struggling to catch all the words. It sort of comes in and out, especially from the back of the room. Is there a microphone on the table that might be shifted? Or? If not, I just might ask Dave to speak up a bit more.
I will, okay? I'll speak louder.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Can you hear that? Okay?
That's better.
Okay.
Much better.
They're trying it on purpose. We'll just have to face the screen and talk louder.
Ah, that helps.
Speak into the screen.
Yeah. You asking who?
I'm on some boards where if I call in, the chair of the board lets people chat.
Oh.
So you're trying to listen to a presentation and two, three people are having a little conversation on the side, which makes it very hard to hear. All right, shall we start at being ready to go? Do you guys have to open something somewhere now? Okay. All right, call the meeting to order then. And let me apologize first of all for the meeting. I have a Kleenex in my hand here. I'll be wiping my eyes. I'm not crying. I have bad allergies.
Oh, it's been suffering.
It's pollen season. And my voice will be a little raspy because, but don't worry, I'll be fine. I'm going to try and read the land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that the County of Halliburton is located on Treaty 20, Mishisagi Territory and in the territory of the Mishisagi and Chipewa Nations collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations, which are Curver Lake, Rama, Hayawatha, Alderwick, Sugah, Bozole and Georgina Islands First Nations. We acknowledge his shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original indigenous inhabitants as stewards of its land and waters since time immemorial. Thank you. Adoption of the agenda. Any questions on the agenda? Could I have a mover and a second or to adopt the agenda, please? Moved by Cease and Walt. All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Any conflicts of interest today by anybody? Seeing none, fine. The next item is the consent agenda, which consists of the draft minutes of our last meeting, which was April 9th, 2025, the chief librarians' report, and the circulation statistics with branch totals. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? If not, I have a motion. Be it resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library accepts, Board accepts the consent agenda for the May 14th, 2025 regular meeting as presented. Moved by Adele, seconded by Jen. All in favor? Thank you, motion carried. Over to you.
Um, so the financial report, there's nothing really to flag for you in terms of anomalies. The, just the one thing that I will note is that our canopy, our use of our streaming service is quite popular and it's a model where we pay for the usage of it. And so it's, uh, was funded by the Halliburton Rotary Club for this year. Um, and just our numbers are trending high. So we have done a little bit of digging to see, you know, are there a lot of people using it that are, um, using it always or kind of dug into the numbers a little bit. Um, so it just is more popular generally. So that's something that we may need to look at, uh, at our June meeting because we are using the money quick, more quickly than we anticipated because the use is up. So it's just, uh, we'll maybe discuss as we go forward. We did find, um, that some, uh, library cards, uh, for people who joined the library during COVID, who didn't actually need to physically come into the library, who just got internet cards. There were a few of those, um, cards that were accessing canopy. So, um, we have, um, closed those accounts and invited the people to come in to the library. So if they are actually local users, um, then we'll find out.
Paul, where in the budget does that canopy, uh, get represented?
Uh, you would see it in from donations, uh, and other coming in. And then coming out, I think we code it under resources. That's how we kind of like think.
Yeah, a question, um, Andrea. Do we track the use of Libby?
Uh, we do. So, um,
And I was not looking for your statistics. It's just that when I was away in Panama, uh, and, you know, you're sitting around a pool, people are reading books on pads.
Yeah.
And they're all reading Libby.
Yeah.
There was about five people there from, or six people from Bancroft and they're voraciously reading Libby on their iPads.
Yeah. So, um, and in the annual report, which we'll, we'll get to, you can see the, uh, use of like digital materials continues to go up. So in terms of, um, uh, we'll get to that, do the statistics later on.
That's fair enough.
But, um, but yes, lots of people do use Libby for, um, magazines and audiobooks and ebooks.
Okay. Any questions on the financial report? Seeing none, could I have a mover and second or to accept the financial report as presented? Moved by Adele. I need someone on, uh, Jen, Jen Jackie, sorry. All in favor? Thank you, motions carried. Now we're going to move to, um, library policies. And I'm going to ask Jen and Adele to help with this because I seem to have missed a number of meetings as I was extremely busy when I got back from Panama.
And Jackie.
And Jackie, sorry, forgot about, yes, Jackie. So you start and then, yeah, those you can pitch in as required. Thank you.
Um, it's just the policy template. So, uh, if you recall, we did approve the template within new branding back in March. Uh, but during the course of our policy meeting, um, there were two suggestions made to changing the template. So the first was to have the policy number included at the top of the page before the policy name. And the second was to add page numbering to the policy. So, um, thanks for those suggestions. Um, Adele had suggested those. So it's the, this policy is just those two minor changes to the template. So going forward, um, we'll make those adjustments, um, as we update the policy.
Okay. So the first, um, policy document, then just a template?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's just those two small changes. So they're adding the policy number before the name at the top and adding page numbers.
Do you have a motion on that?
I think you should have a motion. Yeah.
Resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library accepts Board, so accepts the policy, GOV dash five appendix as presented, as per one?
Yeah.
Okay. This is just to accept that policy format? Could I have a mover and a second or please? Moved by Paul, seconded by Adele. All in favor? Motion carried. Jen, can you hear me okay? All right. Now we're going to go into the, um, library self, uh, board self-evaluation policy, right?
Yeah. So, um, thank you to, um, uh, Jen and Jackie and, uh, Adele and, uh, for all the work that went into this, especially, uh, Jackie did do quite a lot of the prep work. And so attached to the agenda, there are two versions. There's one version which, um, oh, thanks, Graham has pulled it up. He's, uh, shared his screen there. So that is the original version with all of the changes that we had made in, uh, red, red font. So materials that we removed are, um, have the line through, strike through, and then, um, other kind of wording and things that we changed during that. So that's the marked up version. And then the second version is the clean copy without all the red markup. Uh, and the other, um, uh, thing about the clean copy is that the, um, the, uh, the actual questions have been reordered so that the questions with the I statements, um, fall together and we, the questions about referring to the board, uh, are together. Um, so I think a lot of thought and effort went into this. Um, I don't know if, uh, Jen, Jackie, Adele, or anyone else, you wanna make any comments or?
I thi- I think the biggest, um, the biggest change in the policy will be that we've moved from a semi-annual policy to an annual review of our, of our self-evaluation. And the reason for that would be just that we want to get it done. And we thought that annual, and of course we'll, we'll listen to what the rest of the board thinks, we thought that annual would be sufficient.
Oh, yeah.
And then also, um, uh, Jackie had brought up a good point, and that was the column headings on the original, on the original self-evaluation were, um, poor, fair, average, good, and excellent. And she suggested changing those to, um, uh, strongly disagree, disagree, maybe not sure, agree, and strongly agree, which of course were more telling answers to the opinions we were being asked to, to share. So, um, and the rest was, was some good rewording that, that Jackie had come up, come up with, with her research in terms of how to, um, better ways of asking questions.
I noticed, thank you. Before we do the motion, I noticed in the agenda, there's also the, the format for the actual evaluation of the board self-evaluation.
You mean, so did you mean the actual questions?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So the template is part, yeah, part of the policy there.
Okay. And we don't need a motion for that piece.
Yeah. Yeah.
All in one fact.
See all in one. Yeah. Before it was divided into, um, into two.
Yeah, that's why I, yeah. Okay. Any questions on that policy? Thank you very much, everybody, for pitching and doing that. And I apologize for not being around. I was a little crazy after I got back. Paul, go ahead.
I just have a question about this, the process on the evaluation. I, I'm just curious. Is it something we do a self-examination and we have a collective discussion? Isn't that the?
Yeah. So it will be in the annual work plan. We'll, uh, slot it into a timeline, um, probably fall in maybe October, November. And then, um, so the board will do the survey and we'll have, uh, it set up so you can do it online. Um, submit the responses and then, um, we'll collate the responses.
And you'll report it.
And we'll report back. Yeah.
And you'll report back to us and say, you're a terrible board. I'm gonna have to council for a new board.
And, and so from, from that um, collation, then our discussion would have some kind of act kind of, if we decide that we need it.
At the board's discretion. Got it.
Alright, great. Thanks.
If you've never been one, true one, this is quite interesting.
Hmm.
Yeah.
And be honest when you do it. It's, it's better that way. Okay, I have a motion then that be it resolved that the Halliburton County, uh, Library Board accepts policy, GOV dash 11 Library Board Self-Evaluation as presented. Paul and anybody online wanna second that? Jen, you had your hand up quickly. Thank you. All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. Now we'll go to the annual report. Jennifer, Andrea has flashed for Cease.
Yeah. So, um, I do have a couple of extra copies if anybody wants one here. Um, so kudos to the team, um, especially Tessa and Hillary for, um, helping put this together. Uh, we did a lot in 2024. It was pretty, um, incredible year how much we were able to achieve. Um, so some highlights of the year include our, um, amazing touchy truck event, uh, that Shauna organized, uh, to launch summer reading club. Um, all of our class visits, which, um, come primarily to Minden and Wilberforce and Cardiff. The kids come and so regularly scheduled visits. We reached a lot of children that way and got lots of, um, kids signed up with library cards. Um, on the backend, behind the scenes of the library, um, we had, uh, a system transition. So in terms of moving to a new interlibrary loan software and as well as a new book club set, um, reservation system. So, um, that was a lot of behind the scenes work that, um, that happened, uh, with the office team. And we also, uh, as the board knows, we, um, uh, did a staffing review and found ways to, um, uh, achieve targeted savings with our administrative staff, um, wages and benefit lines, um, which was a big, big transition for the team uh, over the year. And finally, and very excitingly, we, uh, went from proposing having a Dorset branch in, uh, in the fall to opening a Dorset branch in follow of 2024. So, um, and yeah, we opened in October and had, um, lots of people come during the summer, doing the amazing Algonquin Highlands event that, uh, was awesome and well attended. And there's a picture of the, the crew on opening day in the, the report. Um, so you can see, uh, some of the stats, uh, we pulled where the circulation, circulation Dorset, um, doubled. You can see in the, the, uh, stats report that is in the consent agenda for circulation that, um, circulation ha- has gone up a lot since, uh, the opening of the branch. And we also have, um, lots of new users come to the Dorset branch to, to get library cards if you haven't. I haven't before. Uh, Graham, can you switch to page two? Scroll down. So, um, of course, we have so many amazing programs at the library, way too many to list. So we've just pulled out, um, a few just examples of different programs for uh, people of different ages and interests. We've got the Diwali Festival, Tennyworth Picnic, some art programs, coding for kids, an author visit, um, Cafe Espanol with the Aging Together as a community group leading that. So, um, yeah, we try to have something for everyone at the library.
No, I, I think it's amazing that, um, you, you know, when I read this, this annual report, I look for things that sort of jump out at you. One of the things that jumped out at me was we organize 584 programs. That's got nothing to do with wa- watering books. That's programs beyond what a lot of people in the old days, you should think all libraries for was putting out books. We're a whole different organization now.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Very impressive.
So, and kudos to, uh, programming at Reach Corps leader Shauna and to the entire team. It, it is a huge team effort of the admin team to do all the, um, organizing and promotion. And to the branch staff who promote the programs and often times deliver the programs, um, it's, uh, a lot of work to put together that many programs, but we, um, yeah, we really try to have something for everyone, including our genealogy with, with Adele here.
Here's a question I probably should know the answer to, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Annual physical circulation for 2024 with 80,500 rounded up. With a population of the county of 21,000, does that mean that for every, every man, woman, and child would use the library four times for a circulating look or something?
It's hard to, um,
How do you?
Say that directly, but it, it means that, you know, if you do straight division.
Yeah.
You know, that, if you divide it by the number of people, for sure, it's, you know, at least four items per per person. And that's not including the digital circulation too, right? People from the green collar. So.
Now, I recognize in the summertime, our population was way up. Figure demand problem, but it's quite interesting that that number is as high as it is given the size of our community. Paul?
My question about the, uh, 584 programs. Can you have a number for the, uh, number of attendees?
We do. We do.
Just curious, offhand, are we on it?
I don't, I didn't bring that information with me. Is that something?
No, no, we don't expect it today, but.
No, no, I'm just curious, uh, because it means that there are thousands of people that have been touched by the programs and that's really, it's really something. It's great.
Jen, uh, what is the difference between a website view and then website user?
Um, so that's, uh, how many people. So the 29,000, I think, maybe, I don't know, Tessa or Hillary might be able to explain this better than I can, but, um, there's people viewing the pages, but I know users. Yeah, I gather people using. So one person could be, you know, viewing lots of different pages on the website. Um, I don't know if you have anything for to add beyond that.
That's great. Twenty eight thousand.
Well, we invested in that website, right? And we do a lot of work to keep it.
It's looking really good.
It looks really good. It's, yeah.
Um, one more, one more point I'd just like to make is that the Act of Card Call since 2020 has gone from sixty one hundred to seventy four hundred twenty five. That's amazing. Act of Card Call, that's a really, really phenomenal.
Yeah. People are using their, their library and they evaluate and we're attracting new people. And I mean, our community is growing as well, right?
Yeah. It reflects the growth of our community. Yeah. Um, final question for me, and this is a generic one. Uh, should we take this annual report to county council and present it? Uh, maybe I think you can take the screen off so I can see the memories.
Graham, could you minimize your screen there? There we go. We can see a little bigger.
You guys on from the council side, think we should bring this to county council for a presentation? Or do you think just circulating it to them would be enough? Go ahead, Jen.
Yeah, I think either would be fine. It would be great to see it in some way. So, you know, if it's, um, the, the only difficulty with submitting it as a document only is that it would probably get into the consent agenda and therefore not be necessarily discussed. Uh, but it doesn't, I'm not sure if a delegate would be, you know, required. So it's a, it's a, I don't know. What do the others think?
Well, I can tell you when Chris was here, we did go to county council, he and I, and presented the annual report to county council.
Yeah, then I think, oh, great idea.
Go ahead, Walt. Go ahead, Walt. Or Cease?
Oh, yeah. That, that sounds fine to me. Sure.
Okay, good. Cease, sorry, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I agree with Jen, like the more, the more information. Again, you're not talking about a, a major presentation or something that's gonna take a lot of time. Could even be done by Zoom if we wanted it. But my, I think the point is it makes, it makes the county council aware of what's going on so that when we do look at it at budget time, uh, there's value in there for the money.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea for, for, uh, Andrea and I to show up at county council. Or if I can't be there, a member of the board would go with the county council. And it would take 10 minutes. It's not, it's not a long, but it's not gonna take a lot of time. Okay, thank you. Um, I have a motion be it resolved that the Halliburton County Library Board accepts the 2024 annual report as presented. Have a mover, please? Jackie. Seconded by Cease. Thank you, Cease. All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you very much. All right, your work plan, I think, is up next.
Um, Dorset, Dorset.
Dorset, sorry.
Um, so, uh, as we were just, uh, mentioning the opening of Dorset, it's.
I know the, I know the, it more than doubled, didn't it? Right here.
We, um, had been open for about six months and, uh, uh, originally we had said, we had, um, brainstormed what the hours would be and said that, uh, we'd try them out for a number of months and then get public feedback about, um, how they were working for everyone. Um, so we have, uh, put together a survey, um, many things, statutory and test of, we work on that. So it will be, uh, both online and there will be a print copy of the survey. And we've, uh, also got some posters with a QR code, um, that we'll put up in various locations. So people, they see the poster, um, and use their phone to go to the, the survey online. Um, and essentially it is questions about, um, how people are using the library in terms of hours and what they, if there are potential different hours that they would like to see. Uh, one piece of feedback that we have received, um, from patrons in Dorset is that, um, while they like the hours, there's not necessarily a weekday after school time. So if, uh, for families who are busy with lessons and other commitments on Saturdays, um, we are open on Wednesdays and Fridays, but only until 3:00 PM. Um, so that's something we have heard from, um, some patrons. So we really want to use, uh, data about what the community wants, uh, uh, to consider if we want to make any changes to the hours. So we are launching, uh, the survey this week. Um, so it's prior to this long weekend. We'll close the survey after the July long weekend. So we'll get people who may be in the area, um, cottaging and also, uh, full-time year-round residents. Um, and we'll, you know, be promoting it on social media, have it on our website. And, uh, so we'll gather that feedback and then prepare, uh, a report for September with what people say.
Um, It's a comment that it may make sense to have different hours in the summer than in the school year.
Good point, Jen.
Perhaps. Yeah.
Will you also, uh, be asking people to identify themselves by demographic, whether they're full-time or, um, just summer residents?
Oh, we haven't included demographic information in the survey. We do have a section, um, all the sections have comments. Um, and there's, there's, uh, open-ended questions towards the end about anything else they would like to share with us. Um.
Jen's, Jennifer, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, I really support that idea. Um, I know that when there was a survey put out in Dorset when the library was closed, that question was not asked. And, um, anecdotally, it seemed that, uh, a whole bunch of people who lived in Toronto and Waterloo said that they didn't need the library and could use the space for something else. And the few people who actually lived in Dorset and who, who only could, you know, rely on that library as their sole library source were the ones who were banging the pots and pans. And because we didn't have the demographics, the, the results were skewed and entirely misunderstood. So this, and that was a bugbear. So this, this would be a really important piece of information, I think.
Can you, can you add that in?
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea.
Are there other questions, um, beyond the sort of open hours and when people would, uh, use them?
So if, if we were open from 10 to 3, is that?
The hours, the current hours are Wednesdays 10 to 3, uh, Fridays 11 to 3, and Saturdays 10 to 3.
So if you, if you were going to try and accommodate the absolute cruel question, would you shift the hours instead of 10 to 3, maybe 1 to 5 or 6, something like that?
Yeah. So that's what we would need to discuss, um, whether we would shift one of the, um.
I don't, I'm not, I'm just throwing that out as an idea. So, uh, okay, we've got Adele, then Jen, then Paul. Yes?
I would also suggest that consideration be given to actually increasing the hours by adding a three-hour after-school shift. About, of course, we'd, um, have to wait for budget time.
Yeah. Jen, go ahead. You're up.
No, I, I don't have anything.
Okay, Paul?
My recollection from, uh, discussions on the hours and, um, scheduling of the hours was that we would review it at a later date based on the uptake and possibly increase it. So I just wanted to mention that again, that we do, um, want to look at that again later. You know what they say? If, if you make it available, they will come. So it's something to keep in mind if we have a bit of money for an hour or two more a week.
More a week, it may be beneficial to the community there. Is this the kind of decision should wait till after the survey?
I, I think so.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's my point.
Gather the information and then present it to you in September so that it can inform budget.
Perfect.
Discussion.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, thanks very much. Um, the next item is the presentation of the draft work plan, which is distributed as part of the agenda.
Um Graham, would you be able to pull that up and share the screen? Thank you. Um, so if we just, Graham, please scroll down a little bit, cause I just added stuff in there that we'd already done, so it would be for the year. Um, so based on um some adult conversations, behind the scenes, the CEO performance evaluation is next on our agenda. Rather than doing that in closed session this time, we'll um discuss who would like to be on the committee. And then we'll have uh the closed session in June. Um, so some of these are question marks because I um was looking for board feedback on what you thought. Uh for June, there's a couple of questions, I know um having a dedicated policy. Uh committee meeting day, if that's something that um would like to organize as a whole day. Um, as well, I'd like to gauge interest in whether there uh there's an appetite for branch tours. Uh good time to do them is in June when it's not too hot, not too much risk of inclement weather. Um, so again, that, that's one thing I'd love to hear from you today about whether that's of interest and something um that I should. Pursue behind the scenes with those who are interested for um for June. Um.
I would say the, on, on the, on the um CEO performance review, that should be in a closed session.
Yes.
For sure. You don't need a question mark on that.
For July and August, we don't have board meetings scheduled. Um, as we were just mentioning, uh for September, we'll present the uh information we gather from the survey about open hours in Dorset. Um, I thought it would be a good time, since we're talking about the Dorset hours and um heading into the budget, that we would um. Take a look at the hours of operation. Everywhere, see if there's anything we wanna look at. Uh hopefully present the first draft of the twenty-twenty-six budget, uh which may be influenced then um. By our discussions about uh Dorset. And um in the fall, specifically when we present the facilities report. Um, I'm not, which is there will be presented by Hillary, it's the deputy CEO who um. Who puts together that report. Uh October, we're moving into um budget submission time. Uh we've got our typical week survey, we, we don't know yet the exact weeks that we'll have to choose from in terms of doing the um, the typical week where we. Measure everything, we've talked about that before. Um, November would be when we could do the uh board self-evaluation process, which we've uh just been discussing. Then put together um the twenty-twenty-six annual work plan in November. Um, then finally in December, I could present the board self-evaluation. And we can sort out the meeting dates and then close dates for our twenty-twenty-six. Um, one other thing that's not written in here, um that I was also looking for feedback about in addition to the um. Branch tours and the um policy meeting day. Um, there is a, a newspaper digitization group, which um Adele is part of, uh and I have been a part of as well. A number of community members um have uh led an initiative to digitize. Uh the newspapers, local newspapers in Halliburton County and um have them uploaded onto the internet archives. Uh Barb Bowlin um has a request of the library a couple of times about whether we could take on going forward. The um, the process of doing that uploading. Um, I'm not totally clear on the commitment that would uh be required of staff. Um, but I do know that it's not something we would be able to do with our current staff. Uh resources, we would need to commit financial resources to that. Um, so I was wondering if there would be an appetite to have that group. Um, make a presentation to the board, um maybe in September. So that you could determine if it's uh something to seek funding for for twenty-two.
Adele, do you wanna comment on that?
Um. More.
Only good to resolve this.
Yeah, more on, more on the timing and um. I'm wondering if the newspaper group should um distill more what the ask would be.
Yeah.
Before um, before you then decide whether it's something that should come to the board. Because if, if you know in your capacity as CEO that it's something that wouldn't be possible, there's no use. Bringing it to the board to see if the board should ask for funds to do it. Um, so I think perhaps um where I sit at the other table, we should distill it a bit more.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think it's really important that. Before we're asked to do something, we know what we're gonna be asked to do.
Yeah.
Um, it's one thing for this group to say, oh, this is great, and I do, I think it's a wonderful idea, you don't wanna lose. Lose the history of our local newspapers in, in the process of time. But at the same time, it's a lot of work to do that, and I think they need to spell out exactly what has to be done. How long it's gonna take and how much money it's gonna cost. And that would have kind of dictated the number of hours that staff here would have to put into it, if they're going for. They hire a summer student or a, a journalism person to do something, you know, there's all kinds of options for that.
Yeah.
But I agree with Adele, I think the more information you have. Then you're better off to advise us on what you think we should be doing.
Hmm.
And Paul, sorry.
Similarly to your point, David, about uh, uh it seems to me, I, I'd just like to plant the seed that I think it's. A bit out of the parameters of the, the library's scope and role, but perhaps under the library umbrella, if there was some funding. From the government somewhere, like another, uh whether it's provincial or federal, whether it's a summer student program or something else. So that those uh local historical values aren't lost. Um, but I, I couldn't see that it would be something that the library would be doing or that they have a person doing. Under the law.
So we don't, honestly, we don't have the staff resources to absorb that, that task, so really. Um, I'm being approached to have the library do that, so in terms of a strategy, strategy decision. It is sort of the board can provide direction about.
Yeah.
Right, but we don't really know what you're being asked to do yet, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can, you can, you can go back to Barb and ask her that kind of information.
Yeah. And if they wanna make a presentation to us, it has to be well before budget, uh budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
A good question, uh given our discussions about the work plan, presentation at county council, would that have to happen in June? Would it have to come into the June work plan?
I think that that probably would be the, I, I'm, perhaps the counselors can advise on.
Cease, go ahead, please. Go ahead, Cease.
Just a question, uh you know, I, I re- I realize and recognize. That we don't have uh library board meetings in, in July and August. But if this is a work plan, I'm wondering, just for the sake of what the library does or plans on doing. Would there be any notable goals, objectives, or milestones that you'd want to achieve in the months of July and August that would be noteworthy? And, and why am I asking that? Because part of the evaluation would be, are we, are we achieving uh, you know, what, what we've said on the work plan, so. I, I'm just wondering, uh I have no problem with not having, making the rotation, there is no board meeting, so there would be no need for complex reports or anything. But if there was something that you wanted to achieve in July or August, then I think it should be noted at, in, in, in the work plan that that is what you're achieving to do. And we may not get a report on it until September. Just saying.
Go, go ahead.
So the uh summer is our very, very busiest time of the year, so all staff resources are devoted to um. Serving the public in, in branches, at community events, delivering programming, it's uh we do lots of programming for children. Um, of all ages, uh we have, we're out at lots of community events, so it's um. The, the work that happens is very much focused on public service, and then that gets reflected in. Kind of in the fall reports of what we, what we did during the summertime, so it really is a. Yeah, focus on that direct provision of programming and.
Yeah. Cease, I think your comment about it being a, a, you know, that the staff doesn't have to devote time to a meeting agenda, which takes a lot of time. I think that's a good point, because most of their time is spent serving the doubling of the population in the summer months. As you could well imagine, there'd be all kinds of people in this library that aren't here yet, but they're coming.
We will also be doing staff training, so we have um, our communications coordinator is starting on Wednesday. In the summer, we have a branch staff who will be starting, so we'll be getting them up to speed uh for the summer night, so.
Yeah. Cease, you still, I, I got a comment?
Well, it just, it's just that in some cases, like I don't want anybody to get the opinion that was, you know, the, the, I, I totally agree that staff. Is taxed out as much as it can be during, during July and August, and, and anybody who wants to argue with that, by all means do so, but I'm certainly not gonna agree. Um, but my point is, is, is during the summer, you've probably got things that you've started, and you're saying, hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. I wanna make one of those happen in July or August, so it would not necessarily be. Uh any kind of a, of a more project, it's just to let uh the, the, the county council know and, and anybody else that's interested. That uh, yeah, we, we, we really service the public and we do a lot of customer service in the summertime, which takes up most of our time. But in this particular year, uh we pretty don't have anything of noteworthy in July, but we have a really cool thing happening in August. And, and it's something that we should make note of. Just saying, I'm, I'm only using it for information dissemination, not, not so much for anything else. So that people know that, that there are, there is some progress, although not very much because of the load. Happening in July and August, but if, if you have nothing notable for this year, then that's fine, I got, I got no problem with that either.
I think the other point to make on this is that um we can address that and other issues when we present our annual report to council.
Okay.
Cause there's a lot of stuff in that report that obviously emanates from a very active summer that we have, all the programs as an example. So we'll, we'll work on that, Cease, thank you, Paul?
Um, this draft annual work plan, this really is. Uh as your work plan relates to this board, right? So I just wondered if the title uh could be changed to reflect that, draft annual um work plan or board work plan, something like that. So that it doesn't look like this is the whole library's work plan, because it's not, there's far more, and I think that's what you're trying to get at, isn't it, Cease?
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
So.
Totally, that, that's exactly what I'm getting at, and, and at the end of the day, um you know, it, it, it's something that. You know, I, I, it's, it's just my opinion of what, of, of perspective and, you know, optics, but. Having said that, if it's not a problem for anyone else, then it's certainly not gonna be a problem for me.
Okay, thank you, um, I'd like to answer some of um Andrew's questions in June. CEO performance review in a closed session, question mark, the answer to that would be yes. Do we need a, a, a whole day for policy, policy committee work? Or do we work on them and bring them here as they're done, just to the board? Adele?
I'd like to see um more policy committee meetings in the work plan, uh because it looks like. The June one is the last one of the year, and I think we were going to meet quarterly.
Yes, we were.
So I would prefer um half-days quarterly.
Okay.
Um, but I'm also looking um at the work um that's required, like for example. September doesn't look like a good month for policy meetings because um. Because the CEO is all carrying budgets, et cetera. So maybe if we had another policy meeting in October, after the budget's been, the final budget's been prevented, presented.
So you're saying have one in June and then another one in October?
Another one in October, and I'd like to even see one um. In November. I have the feeling that if we don't put it down in writing, we're just not going to do it.
Yep, you're absolutely, yeah.
And I'm also wondering about um. In October, it says typical week survey conducted, that's not board work though, is it?
Uh, it's not board work, no, it is um, uh it is an operational task that takes a lot of effort for.
Right, but it's not part of our work plan, is it?
No.
No?
Yeah.
Oh, well, although there should be somewhere in here where it's um, that it's conducted, but then the board should. Receive a report on what the results of that were, and so that just needs to be put into somewhere into an agenda, but it's not part of our work plan.
Right, exactly, so it's um. Um, and then um the branch tours, I went on a branch tour, we, we all did, I think.
Yeah.
When we first came on the board.
Two years ago.
Two years ago, um. But at that time, I believe there was only one um county counselor that came on the tour with us. So in terms of, and I'll, I'll speak frankly, in terms of the county counselors. Getting out to the branches and, and, and hearing the presentation in each branch. Um, that to me would be rather important, but county counselors are there to hear that, but if their schedules. Um, don't allow them to participate in the branch tours. Um, then why are we doing it if it's mostly only the public members who can attend? And, and that, of course, is not meant to, to um, to say that county counselors wouldn't want to come on the tours, but I suspect that getting. Eight of us together um on, for a branch tour, that the county counselors are going to have difficulty with their schedules. So then the question to me is, why are we doing it? It, I think, I, based on the quality of the tour last year, it felt like it took a lot of work on part of staff to get it done. Or when we did it in two thousand twenty-three, yeah. So, the cost, the, the cost to the staff, is that worth the benefit to the board members?
Yeah. Any member of council wanna comment on that? Do, do you think you need a tour of the, of the branches? Or do you think you'll have time to do a tour, give up a day to go on a tour of the branches? Would you wanna get that done in when? What time of year, Andrea?
Oh, well, June is a nice month, uh just in terms of weather.
Do you guys have a free day in June that you can uh allocate to something like this? Because I think Adele makes a good point. I think it's important that you, you as elected officials, see the branches, now you may have already done that, so if, if I'm wrong, don't, don't take. Don't take that as gospel.
I, I'll put this on just to gauge interest, I think behind the scenes, we can work out the logistics of the dates, um.
I think Jen has a question, do I have?
If there's update.
I think it's invaluable, uh I thought it was a great tour, I wouldn't get to the Highlands East branches myself otherwise. Um, they're about a million miles away from where I live, so I needed, I needed that tour to um. Uh, you know, to see them, so yeah, I, I do think it's invaluable for good decision-making. But I appreciate Adele's comments that scheduling is, is hard, and, and we may not be able to. To find a day that, that suits everyone, but, but the, the event is worthwhile.
Yeah, Jackie, go ahead.
Yeah, I was thinking, because it is such a big time commitment, would it make sense to split it up and say, okay, on this afternoon, we're gonna do the Highlands Eats. East branches. On this day, we'll do the Dyserd and Alkoff and so on, so um. Would it make sense? Cause then it's less of a time commitment on behalf of council members, and um.
Good point, yeah.
Yeah.
Paul, you had a question?
Well, I, I was just wondering if it could be sort of a self-serve thing, like when I joined the, the board. I thought, I better go around and see all the branches, so I took a tour and I went to Highlands East one day and I went to here and there. So I took a tour and I went to Highlands East one day and I went to here and there, and, and so I did that myself. Um, knowing what days the branches are open. I just wonder if it'd be easier for the, the members to just uh, you know, be aware of the the schedule, uh, scheduled days of opening. And uh, just give a heads up, I'm gonna go to Wilberforce on this and this day, uh, just to let the staff know. Or like, does, does that work as an alternative, so it's not so cumbersome and organizing?
Except scheduling is everything.
Jen, go ahead.
Um, and, and another alternative is that we schedule, if this works operationally, that we schedule four of our board meetings at each of the four, um, within each of the four municipalities. And when we get to Wilberforce, we do, you know, we do a little tour of the other, of the other branches uh while we're there. But, but because county council members have already designated this time for, for library, then possibly, you know, a bit of travel time on either side wouldn't be difficult, but I've not consulted the others to know.
That's a great idea.
There would be some logistical challenges for the staff, I think, um, to do that. Like there's the, then we have this set up here in Daisar and we have it in Minden. Um, so it could work if everyone was in person, but the chances of that. Yeah, I just, I'm worried about maybe some of the logistics of.
Andrea, why don't, why don't you do a, you know what a doodle poll is? Why don't you do a little doodle poll among the board members about a willingness to, or interest in doing a tour? And some, pick some days in June that might work and see what you get. Okay?
Okay.
That's the best way to do it, because I don't want to make any assumptions about going or not going until you've had a chance to figure out if anybody's interested in going. Cecil, go ahead. Go ahead, Steve.
One of, one of the things, like, one of the things that I can say about the tours is that I, I did not go on the last one, and I apologize for that. And the second thing is, I have not been to the, to either the Stanhope or the Dorset uh facility, which is, again, my problem. But I, I go to the uh, uh, Minden and Halliburton ones on a regular basis because my wife goes there and we kind of sort of go, so I, I really don't think I need a tour of those two. And because of who I am and where I'm located, I see all four of the, of, of the library uh in, in, in Halliburton, in Highlands East at least uh once a year, uh sometimes a bit more, but, but so much. But I, I, I think if we were to set it up so we have to go to all of them, then, then that becomes a tough day. But to not be able to go to the ones that I have not had a chance to see is my problem, and I should be making the effort to do that. So if we have to go to all of them, then that creates a problem. But if I get the opportunity to go to Dorset and Stanhope, which I have to do, uh because I want to, not because it's, it's mandated for anything, but it, it is something that I need to be able to do and I need to be able to be familiar with. Then, then whether I choose to do it on my own or whether I go through the board. But I think what Jennifer's saying is you're motivated more if it's set up for somebody else. Or, what I mean by that, set up by somebody else for you to be there. So I, I'm not sure I would want to go to all, all of them. But I certainly would want to make myself available for the ones in, 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 uh, in Stanhope and Dorset, because that's my problem and I haven't been there and I need to be. Just my opinion.
Um, what about if, in terms of the questions that I uh provide to the, the board member app, or members after, for each person, which are the branches that you're interested in going to? And then I can organize the people who are interested in this branch, okay, here are times we, we could all meet, so almost individually, so that um there could be us, a few people for that particular branch, does that make sense?
Yep.
So it could be a little bit more targeted and specific, instead of taking up a whole day for everybody. Like a day, so we'd find a day for Dorset, Stanhope, and a day for the Highlands East branches um for those who want to attend, does that maybe make it more manageable?
Yeah.
That certainly would make mine, right?
All right. I have a motion that, um, are, are we finished with the work plans? Any other questions, any other parts of it? So you'll add a, a county council visit into June somewhere, speak to the clerk of the county? I think the CEO is the clerk as well, right?
Um, I'm sure if it's Michelle Moore or Gary, well, well, yeah.
Leave, leave that to you. Okay, I have a motion that should be a result of the Halliburton County Library Board approves the draft twenty twenty-five work plan as presented. Moved by. Adele?
I'm seeing a frozen screen, Walt and Cease, are you uh seeing frozenness?
I, I see the two of you guys, but everybody else seems to be stuck somewhere.
They are stuck, okay. Just give them a minute.